Rules, federal foreign, micronutrient affairs, human and natural resources, election reform and capital district shall come to order for the purposes of hearing some several appointments as well as Bill 279 relative to the voting age requirements for the primary and general election. And at 10 o'clock we have a round table. Let me go ahead and, if it's okay, let me, let's have the bill first because we have an individual, I believe he, the only youth member so far that signed up for Bill 279-33 and he has a 9:30 and we want to accommodate him. And so this bill is introduced by Dr. Senator Nerissa Underwood and it's enacted at a new subsection 1 to 3102B of Chapter 3, Title III, GCA, relative to clarifying eligible age for voting during the primary and general election. And just for some housekeeping purposes in accordance with the open government law, notices of this hearing was sent to all media outlets and all senators and stakeholders five days in advance on March 15, 2016. And a second notice was sent on March 18, 2016. And I'd like to welcome and thank my colleagues for being here. Senator Underwood is here, thank you. Minority Leader Tony Ada, Senator Ada, and Senator Mary Torres, thank you for joining me in this public hearing. So I'd recognize, and I'm glad you took your seat, I understand you have to go, but your presence here is certainly not only important but symbolic, certainly because of what the bill is attempting to do. And I'd like to recognize the sponsor for some sponsor statements.
Thank you very much, Senator Respecho, and especially for expeditiously scheduling a public hearing on Bill Number 279-33. Bill 279 adds a new subsection to current Guam statutes to further clarify the eligible age for voting during the primary based on the existing eligibility age of voters in the general election. Basically, pre-registered voters who are 17 years of age would be allowed to vote in the primary election only if they will be 18 years old by the general election. So there's a gap of about two months before they turn 18. As it is now, the age of consent is 16 years old, the age to get a driver's license is also 16 years old. And to enlist military service, one must be 17 years old with parental consent. Age 16 to 18 is a critical age for many of our young adults. And thus, we need to make every attempt to include them and prepare them to take responsibility. As American citizens in Guam, we all know the critical importance of suffrage and voting rights, especially since our votes for the president are not counted when it comes to electoral votes. Given this context, we should unite to make uniform the ability of voters who will be of age in the general election to contribute to the selection of candidates who will ultimately vote for in the general election. We all know when we are able to contribute, we take ownership. Let's provide our constituents then with the ability to own this vital part of the democratic process. I appreciate the work of Senator Torres in initiating the law that allows persons at least 16 years of age to pre-register to vote. It is important for us to facilitate and encourage responsible participation for in the voting process. Through Bill 279-33, I believe we can help our young adults to witness their efforts and see that they have the ability to make a difference. Guam can make, can help make history by joining 21 states and the District of Columbia that already allows 17-year-olds who will be 18 in the general election to participate in their state primaries or caucuses. It's important for me to emphasize that primary voting rights for 17-year-olds does not change the voting age since only those 17-year-olds who will be 18 by the general election may vote in the corresponding primary election. This bill treats the nomination contest as an integral part of the general election in which these citizens can vote. Remember, the 26th Amendment prevents jurisdictions from denying suffrage to 18-year-olds but does not prevent our legislature from establishing 17-year-old primary voting. If I can emphasize one thing today, it is that voting when young forms a lifetime habit. All parties have a self-interest in encouraging this policy. If a 17-year-old votes in a particular party's contest, that young person votes, may vote for decades based on their shared values and interests. Studies show that youths will vote if asked to do so. This policy increases youth engagement in the political process by creating an ethic of participation from a younger age. Once a person votes, that person is likely to vote again, and we want to start them early. I look forward to listening to testimony provided this morning and hope to get the support of my colleagues to have Bill 279-33 passed so that we can ensure that eligible young adults are included in the very important process of voting in Guam. So, I now turn this over to you, Mr. Chairman. I thank you very much for listening to my long speech.
Thank you, Senator Underwood. Let me invite Maria Panglinen with the Election Commission so she could be alongside you as you testify. I only have two individuals who signed up to testify for Bill 279. Are there any, Dr. Ron, are you going to testify for 279?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, please, we have some seats available. And then Jen, just ask Mr. Perez if he's going to testify, and if so, then he can join us. Okay? Good morning again. And Maria, is it okay if we make an exception to our rule and we allow Mr. Orsini from the Guam Youth Congress to provide testimony? Thank you. Go ahead.
Hafadeh. My name is Leonard Orsini, and I am here representing the Guam Youth Congress. Currently, the Vice Speaker of the 30th Guam Youth Congress. And I've prepared today a letter statement, and it's been signed by several members of the Guam Youth Congress in support of Bill 279. So I'm going to read off the statement as well as additional commentary that I've integrated. So I'll start off right now. "As representatives of the Guam Youth Congress, we, the signatories, support 279 that it will allow 17-year-olds who will turn 18 by a general election date to vote in a primary election. Such a practice that is implemented in at least 20 states seeks to create greater access for young adults to participate in our democratic process. We, young adults, represent a demographic that has historically shown the lowest voter turnout, yet has also been realized to be one of the strongest and often untapped pool of voters for any election. As politically engaged individuals, we realize the need for our voices to be heard and for a political system to allow us to become agents of change. The youth voice has historically been the driving force for institutional change within our society. We are idealists, inheritors of our parents' world, and the future solvers of today's problems. In order to create a better world, we represent a voice that must be allowed to participate in the mechanisms of society so as to catalyze positive change. The intent of Bill 279 could not be more patriotic to the ideals of America. Spanning since its revolutionary beginnings of disaffected colonists to numerous civil rights movements and present-day struggles, America's history is characterized as one that has shown that the rights to participate in democracy are inherent to those who are governed. It is unpatriotic to take on an attitude of exclusion such as prevent this group of young adults who would be affected by this bill from participating in our democratic process. Bill 279 seeks to promote and uphold the ideals of democracy by enfranchising young adults who by mere consequence of their date of birth would be barred from voting in a primary election regardless of their ability to vote in the subsequent general election." Thank you.
Thank you, and you're welcome to stay for as long as you can in case there are any questions, but if you have to leave, we understand too. Maria Panglinen.
Hafadeh, Mr. Chairman, Senator Torres.
Hafadeh.
Hafadeh, Senator Underwood and Senator Ada. At a public meeting of the Guam Election Commission last night, March 21, 2016, Bill 279 was discussed. The commissioners welcome any bill that will promote participation in the voting process. In particular, the commission is very supportive of the efforts to grow the young voters, a very poorly represented sector of our voter population, 8.6% of the 2014 general election voters. Please keep in mind that more resources will be required should this bill become law. Sizuus maasi for your continued support of the Guam Election Commission. Pueriha mas megai na man hobin man vota zan man ma kuenta esti mamailatna elekshon. Sizuus maasi.
Sizuus maasi, loqui. Dr. Ron.
Thank you, Senators, and also hafadeh. Thank you. My name is Ron McNich. I work at the University of Guam, and I teach public administration, which involves and kind of relates to this particular topic. I support this bill. I think it'll have a number of positive purposes and outcomes. Primary elections are elections that are used to kind of winnow down a slate for a party. And typically primaries are the domain of the party, but on Guam, we pay for these primaries or their taxpayer dollars. And so it's fitting that if, if we want to adjust and change the view a bit on allowing young people to vote, I think it should be allowed because we're paying for it. And if parties don't like it, let them do their own election and pay for their own election. And so that's the kind of edge that I feel is in response to parties objecting to this if they do object to it. I don't think the parties on Guam would object to it, and other places in the U.S. mainland they have. This issue of allowing the 17-year-olds to vote prior to the point where they turn 18 for the primaries is very important, and here's why. It allows a particular number of young people who are 17 but not quite 18 to show others that they can vote. And when young people vote, that kind of creates an effect where others want to vote. And we, there was a very famous economist about 120 years ago, his name was Thorsten Veblen. And Thorsten Veblen said that we do stuff because we're constantly comparing ourselves to other people. And when we compare ourselves to other people, we want to be just like them. And he called this concern conspicuous consumption. And so I certainly hope in the future, young people will catch on to this conspicuous consumption aspect and be encouraged to vote. By showing others that they can vote, then others will register to vote and participate. It involves them early in the activity, and I think that's very, very wonderful. Currently at the university, among our student clubs, we have an under-25 voter drive, and it's specifically designed for this purpose also. We found that quite a number of young people at the university aren't registered to vote, and so one of their community activity goals is to get them registered to vote so they can be a participant in vital public processes. To the credit of the Guam Election Commission, they have an online registration process now that makes it very convenient for young people to register to vote, and it's very accessible, particularly to our tech-savvy young people. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak today, and thank you very much.
Thank you also for your continued participation and guidance with these particular issues. Senator Underwood, do you have any follow-up?
Yes, I do. First of all, I really want to thank the three of you, Leonard Orsini, and Maria Panglinen and Dr. McNich, for, this was such a short notice because this was just introduced late last week. And for Senator Respecho to schedule a public hearing right away, so really, you know, I really appreciate that. And for you to come, especially during the Easter break, or spring break, I certainly appreciate your passion for this. So I do have a question for Ms. Panglinen. Relative to the number of registrants, do we have a number right now? You know, we have started 16-year-olds, right? And we have a sense right now about how many have already registered?
Senator, we don't have any 16, we don't have anybody under 18-year-olds in our voter registry yet, as of yet.
Okay, so, but there are efforts to...
Did you want to hear about them, ma'am?
Yes, I do.
I'm proud to announce that the Guam Department of Education is now compliant. Two weeks ago, we trained at least two employees from every public high school. Last week, on Wednesday and Thursday, Guam Election Commission spent two days at the Simon Sanchez High School. They've initiated a community, a service learning project where their goal, and they have it, it's very visible in the library, their goal is to register 500 voters by mid-May. And so, yes, the, we also have, the Guam Election Commission has over 140 volunteer registrars out there. And last night at the meeting, we're going to make an effort to, to start, to benchmark and then start keeping data on the 18 to 24-year-olds. One of the things that, one of the commissioners had mentioned is, can we keep tabs on how many people register at the schools? So we are going to start looking at that as of, for the primary election.
So, so we started in Simon Sanchez, but there is a plan to expand to the other high schools, I imagine?
Well, the invitation came directly from Simon Sanchez. One student from Tizen High School, the president of Close Up, the Close Up Group, is now a trained, a deputized registrar. So as soon as the invitations come in, we do what we can to accommodate them.
Okay.
Oh, by the way, Senator Underwood, on March 31st, at 11 o'clock, Simon Sanchez High School is holding a voter registration drive for an hour. Their goal next week, Thursday, I believe, is to register 100 new voters.
Very good, very good. So I, I just can't imagine the other high schools not wanting to take advantage of this. But, you know, again, this is not just to promote the bill because I sponsored it, but this is just perfect timing because if we actually have the voter registration and this gets passed into law, it would be an additional incentive for us to encourage those who are 17-years-old, right? And so I thank you so much for your work, and I know it's complicated. I won't even ask how much more you're going to need if this were to be, if this were to be paid.
going to, let me recognize, I want to defer to Senator Torres now, but I want to be sure to recognize the chairman of the Democratic Party of Guam, Mr. Ken Perez, is in the room, and I think he's here as an observer because as Mr. Dr. Ron McNich pointed out, it's really we don't see any opposition to this bill, and we'll, we'll reach out again, but he's nodding his head no, so that's a good sign. And I'm sure the other, the other political party feels the same way. I want to invite Mr. Joe Sanchez forward. And while you're setting up, I, since we're on this current conversation topic, I want to recognize Senator Torres, who's done a lot so far by way of true election reform and to increase the voter participation in the upcoming elections. So Senator Torres? Yeah, yeah, yeah. We could, if you're on this topic, or, yeah.
Sizuus maasi, Mr. Orsini, Mrs. Panglinen, and Professor McNich for being here. Maria, I just had a follow-up question. When you talked about the commission being in support of this, I'm thinking about logistically what occurs right now. Can you explain to me, right, right now, when we register to vote, under current statute, when you turn 18, when you're 18-years-old, at the general election, you will be eligible to vote and you will be added to the voter, the voter rolls, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what is it that triggers the date to determine when you're 18-years-old? Is it the date of the primary portion of the general election, or is it the date of the November general election when you will be 18? How do you determine who you put on the voter rolls for that particular general election? Say this one coming up.
Anybody that's going to be 18 at the next election.
So the next election would be, what, the primary?
The primary, that's correct, ma'am.
So right now, so right now, you, you don't, so it's, the primary has always been a trigger. Okay, that's, that's the one thing that would, that would definitely make clarification then, or actually, it's a change to the law to allow that small window. Okay? Because I wasn't, I wasn't sure how it was practiced presently, and I just want to be sure. So now what then would, would cause you to need added resources to ascertain who is in that small window?
Okay. Besides this and the pre-registration at 16, we have to set up the database so that we will weed out those that won't be 17, or that won't, that are, that won't be 18 by the general election. So the program must be put, the new codes must be put in, and then, as you may know, we're currently upgrading, we're currently in the process of upgrading our voter registry system. So that will work into all the changes that we have to make with the new laws.
And there's more than enough time, would you say, as you're registering now for the upcoming election?
Yes, ma'am. We are updating our registration rolls every month. I'm proud, I'm happy to say that come February 2016, on February 29th, re-recorded an increase of 175 voters very early on for the next elections.
That's good. And I want to also commend Professor McNich for your efforts. I think that get out the vote is, that's the sort of effort that we need to get people to, to come out. And also, Mrs. Panglinen, you know, for all your efforts in the online voter registration, I think are good. And of course, we couldn't, it couldn't happen without the leadership of the youth congress and all that you do to bring awareness. So that was the only thing that I wanted to, to clarify in how we were doing it right now. But I don't foresee that you should need that much more money because it's just a very simple modification. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Since we're on the subject of clarifying, there's one area also that needs to be clarified, and that's relative to having to show ID to the registrar. When Senator Torres was able to introduce a bill and the legislature passed it, it required that they don't have to show proof of citizenship and they just have to sign an attestation under penalty of perjury that they're qualified to vote under those circumstances. But since that law's been passed, you've raised the issue several times to us individually and to the legislature, that at this point you believe that that also needs to be clarified? And I just want to create some public discussion on this because this, there might be an opportunity to do a simple amendment if Senator Underwood agrees in this bill and Senator Torres agrees if it's necessary to do that. But is it necessary to do that?
With the update of the voter registration bill back in April, a certain portion of the old law was removed, and that made it clear what requirements, that made it clear what requirements there are to register, which included the passport or the birth certificate. With the removal of those items directly off the law, it's not very clear whether a photo ID is required at this time.
Has the board addressed this? Do you think this can be addressed through a resolution of the board saying that, because it's, I mean, it doesn't say that you, you shall not, or, but it just is silent? But I think the intent of that, of the law, like, may, go ahead, I'll defer to Senator Torres.
Mrs. Panglinen, I think that what we can do, and I'll look at it with the author of this bill, and perhaps we can amend it further in committee, but what we can do is, the law right now, particularly when you show up for voting at the polls, it provides that the voter, the precinct officials will verify your ID. And so what we can do is further expound on what verification of ID means. And, you know, it's also, we know that with online voter registration, the way we set it up was the verification happens on the Department of Motor Vehicles Division because they have gone through and vetted and ascertained that you are in fact the person you are. So what we, what we might do is, on the, on the portion where, where people physically register, where it doesn't say that you must show your ID, it does tell you to provide all your things, so that verification part, we can slip in there as well, just to make it absolutely clear. I mean, most people, when they, when they write their ID number on the form, would expect that someone would want to confirm that what they wrote down matches what's on record, and the record is their hard ID or their driver's license. So that, that, you know, one and two process, we can, we can add in there if you feel that that will make it clear. It's assumed and it's practiced, but if you feel that you want it in there to take away any guess, guessing, we can do that perhaps.
I'm, I'm happy to say that our commissioners, all seven of them, have been looking since after June, starting July of last year. The commissioners have been looking at all the, of the law, making sure that it's really tight. This was one area of concern because, because of the, of the deletion of that section. We had sent to both Senator, you, Senator Torres, and Senator Respecho, the compilation of the updates that the commission has put together through their public meetings. So I am sure that we, the commissioners will extend their appreciation for anything that could be done so that those updates can be done very quickly before the primary election. Oh, Senator Torres, may I mention one thing? In the, in the delete, the deleted area, the deleted portion of the law, it was very broad in terms of what kind of photo ID. So one of the things that was listed in the old law was a school ID. It didn't mention anything about government ID. So if a person has an ID from any of the private schools, those two can be acceptable, both at the polls and at the, when registering to vote.
I will, I will look into that because what, what I want to make sure we do is to provide for official ID that in fact, you know, is a reflection of some verification of your true identity, your true age, your true residency, those sorts of things. So maybe, maybe as the committee is working through those considerations, I can reach out to you as well before we finalize it and it gets to the floor. But I appreciate, and of course, we want to continue to facilitate the process, and I acknowledge that, you know, a lot of people are putting a lot of effort into it, and we're here to make that effort smooth and transparent as well. So, you know, thank you very much for being very open.
Yeah, thank you. And I think if we do, as Senator Torres is suggesting, that, that amendment will still be germane because Senator Underwood's bill speaks to clarifying the eligible age in voting. So be thinking about what else we can clarify under these boundaries while I recognize Mr. Sanchez to give testimony. And I just want to get it on the public record if there's something else, Maria, that we could take care of now, but so, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Good morning, Senators, Senator Torres, Respecho, Underwood, and Ada. My name is Joe Sanchez, and I am the Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instructional Improvement for the Guam Department of Education. I come before you today to offer my support of Bill 279-33. As an educator and one of the... As an educator and one who is responsible for crafting the educational experience of students in the GDOE, I would like to assert that this bill is really a prime example of the point of it all, the point of education, I mean, or at least one of its main points. Allowing our young people access to and an opportunity to expand their ability to participate in the political process is a recognition of their voice and importance to our society. The bill is directly aligned to our department's mission, which is, in summary, charges us to prepare all students for a life where they can go straight into a career, pursue higher education, and to be engaged in our civic processes. This also comes at a time where there seems to be an eagerness in this generation's desire to be involved and to have their voices heard. I have several examples that I'm proud to share with you today. During school year 2013 and 14, when we were drafting our state strategic plan, we visited schools to meet with students to get input on the challenges they were experiencing and to obtain some suggestions on how we can improve the department. The input they provided was nothing short of impressive. They spoke about instructional quality, the need for rigor in the classroom. They talked about the lack of resources, the need for more technology, their desire to be treated with respect. They talked about racism in the schools and school violence. All of their input was taken into consideration when crafting our state strategic plan. Another example are the students who are currently on our island-wide Board of Governing Students. This is an impressive group. They do not sit idly by and just listen to the adults speak. They get involved. They voice their concerns, and they let us know when they disagree with you. They bring a very mature and humbling perspective to the table at all of our board meetings and work sessions when they participate. I enjoy working with them very much. Also, very recently, over the past few months in fact, we have students from various middle schools and high schools participate in the Imagine Guam conventions, the meetings for Imagine Guam where we were to craft a vision and plan for the island for the next 50 years. I couldn't be prouder of our student representatives. As I walked around observing the groups, I found them to be very eager to share and participate. They were thoughtful and very articulate, and again, contributed a very important perspective to the group's work. This bill would allow our young people greater access to a process that we want them to participate in all of their life. As a school system, we can further support the bill's intent by strengthening our curriculum in the areas of civics and government and promote the elections as a culminating activity for many of our juniors and seniors. Together with the law that allows for early registration at 16, and those similar, show that we are moving in the right direction when it comes to hearing and lending legitimacy to the voices of Guam's youth. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for your participation this morning. I also want to recognize our minor leader, Senator Ada, for some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Pangolin, you spoke about the resources, but what you didn't speak about was the cost associated with those needed resources. Do you have those numbers available? And what would the cost be? And is it currently within your budget to?
Sis, mase for the question, Senator Ada. As you know, this was just introduced last week. And before the introduction of this bill, we had submitted to the Office of Finance Budget a request for supplemental. So our request for supplemental is $390,000 that I'm supposed to meet with the Office of Finance Budget about. That does not include this, and it also does not include implementation, full implementation of online voter registration. So I don't have those figures yet because we don't know, we still have yet to find out from Revenue and Tax and from UOG Computer Center on what we need to implement these two.
So then, if this bill is heard in our next session and passed into law, how would you be able to implement it before the primary election in August, right?
Sir, right now, we have 10 on staff. We've already picked up our processing paperwork for three more. We're hoping to get enough time with the three to train them to input. Our biggest part of voter registration, probably the biggest cost, the variable cost, is inputting. But there's a major cost that has not, we've looked at $97,000 right now for a quick fix on our voter registration system. Our voter registration system is over 20 years old. Yes. And so we want to not only make sure that it's secure and stable, we've, the University of Guam Computer Center has done a good job with that, but we also want to increase its capacity and be able to generate reports, like what I had mentioned earlier. So in terms of how are we going to, how are we going to implement this law, should it, how are we going to implement this law when it becomes enacted, we will come back to you and let you know that at this time, this is what we've done, this is the progress we've made, and this is what we need to continue on.
Of the 390,000 that you went to OFB for supplemental, that takes care of your past obligations or also current?
No, sir. The 390,000 is only to make us get through the primary election. As you may know, every fiscal year is budgeted an election. So even years budget the primary election, odd years budget the general election. So when we go before the legislature, come during the regular budget process, what we ask for is the total amount covers an election. So we have yet to come before the legislature, and we understand the limited resources. But when we come before you and we don't get the full amount, we've, our record shows that we come back for a supplemental right before the primary or the general.
Have you and the board sat down to figure out how much implementing this law would cost?
This particular one, sir? No. Like I said, it was just discussed at last night's meeting. And so I let them know that I will look into it some more and get to them. Then our next meeting is April 21st.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just needed to clarify because there are needs, obviously, that the Guam Election Commission is articulating right now. So on the one hand, you have a software that you need to update, or the computer program that you need to update so that it would have greater capacity. That's what I heard you say.
Yes, but that's a subsequent step. That's not the first step we need to get done. The first step we need to get done is get the hardware, get, update hardware.
Yeah, right. So the computer, the hardware, then the software, and even the programmer, who can then make sure that we get the reports and the list, the correct list, and so on. And then the other part that I heard you say, Ms. Pangolin, was that you are already working on the human resources. You actually need to have those who, you have volunteers to register, but it seems to me that there are those, there's some kind of inputting that needs to occur because not everyone is doing online registration. So the 390,000 that you are requesting, is it for both the computer upgrade and the human resources, or is there for both?
With the fiscal year 2016 budget, we've allotted, the Guam Election Commission has allotted the appropriation to include the four temporary workers. The supplemental only includes the software and the hardware.
And the hardware?
Yes.
And further, when my colleague, my good senator here, colleague had, and he had asked a real, a really good question, because when we do pass laws, we need to ensure that there's some kind of fiscal impact that we have to address. But, you know, having worked with a limited amount of programming, right, in research planning and evaluation, this is really identifying the 17-year-olds who will be eligible to vote, who will be 18, right? It's really an issue of programming the software, right?
Well, at this point, with the enactment of preregistration,
Right.
We've amended our process and updated it so that we don't even enter the people into the system at this point. And so, you know, that jeopardizes the sanctity of the overall registry. So we want to get the software to where we can enter it and keep it there, but come election time,
Right.
we just have a voter roster for only those that are eligible to vote. The software we currently have has yet to be updated to do that.
And that's where the 390,000 is needed?
Portions of it, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very quickly, do you have an idea of what else needs to be clarified, just so we get on the record?
No, sir, but may I ask the committee to accept our notes when I get to them?
Okay, but in thinking of the things that you've been bringing up, I think the most important thing that needs clarification is the presentation of the form of ID.
Thank you very much, yes.
Right, Senator Torres, that's probably the, anything else can either be addressed administratively through your board or could come later on?
Yes, you know, the one, we've, what we have forwarded to both you and Senator Torres, those, the board has decided that, you know, we'd rather have it so that it's enacted into law, that it's updated through law.
Okay, but the most pressing one is the one that we talked about today?
Yes, that's, yes, that's correct.
That's what I thought also. Okay, if there's no other individuals that will, that want to testify at this point on Bill 279, I want to say that the record will remain open, and customarily, we leave the record open 10 days or when we have session, whichever comes first. But the sponsor and I have been talking, and we believe that it's also important that we spend some time in the schools sometime next week. Right now, it's spring break, so they're not there. So when they come back, the sponsor's office will make some arrangements for us to go to those schools, such as Simon Sanchez that you talked about, that's doing this project. And even though we're in session, we could take, yeah, take some time to still go and receive their testimony and input on this bill. But thank you for your participation, and if anything else comes up that you'd like to clarify, and Senator Torres pointed out that that clarification is affecting the same section, so it certainly is germane. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we still have some appointments on the agenda, and I would like to, we have a lot of individuals who signed up, but I believe they just signed up to show support. If, you know, I stand corrected, if you do want to come forward and give testimony, you're certainly welcome, but let me just invite both the nominees, Mr. Robert Perron and Florita Sanchez. And I'm sorry, we're kind of set up this way because following this public hearing, we're going to shift into a roundtable discussion. So it's not that we wanted to put some barriers in between us because it's never been that kind of hearing at all. Okay, Dr. Ron, you want to just come forward because you signed up to give testimony for Mr. Perron, who's currently the chairman of the EPA Board? And Jesse, you just, Jesse Cruz signed up, and Roth, would you like to come forward, ma'am? Yeah. Okay, so Ms. Roth, I'll recognize you at this time, and then we'll go with Dr. Ron and then Mr. Cruz.
All right, good morning, senators. Good morning, Senator Rispicio, Torres, Underwood, and Ada. And I'm here to support the nominations or for reconfirmation for Robert Perron and Flori Sanchez. I've been on the board maybe about five years. They've been on much longer. They are totally knowledgeable, or as knowledgeable as anyone can be, you know, not actually working there. I do want to encourage you to continue to support them and give them a go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, given that testimony, we don't have to proceed any further.
No, you don't.
But since you're all here, thank you, ma'am. Thank you also for your service on the EPA Board.
Thank you.
Five years, wow, time flies. Dr. Ron?
Hafaday Senders, and good morning. My name is Ron McNinch, and I saw that Mr. Perron's nomination was up for consideration this morning, and I just wanted to offer some brief input and testimony. I've known Mr. Perron for over 15 years. He's a very fine gentleman, a wonderful community participant. He gives back to the community. He works on a lot of very important things that directly support his role currently on the board. I don't know Ms. Sanchez personally, but I've heard many wonderful things about this board, and I believe that she would be an excellent member of the board. There's one other quick point I'd like to mention. In addition to supporting both of these candidates, board work on Guam is extremely important, and quite often, we don't appreciate the large amount of outside work these citizen volunteer boards do. And I wanted to just let the public know that while they may not see a lot of the very important things that these boards do quite often, because there are quite a number of boards, the work of the EPA Board is extremely important, and they take their jobs seriously. And I am heartened that they're doing the work that they did. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Dr. Ron. Mr. Cruz?
Good morning, senators. I'm Jesse Cruz. I'm the Division Administrator for Environmental Management and Local Services Division within Guam EPA, and I'm here to read the prepared statement from our acting director, Yvette Cruz. She apologizes since she's not here, she has an appointment this morning for a child. Hafaday Chairman, Rispicio, and senators, I respectfully submit this written testimony in support of the reappointments of Robert Perron and Flori Sanchez as members of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency's Board of Directors. During my tenure here, Bob Perron's dedication to the agency, its mission, and the staff have been unwavering. As board chairman, he has always been accessible and available to management and staff alike. He is supportive of the agency and joins agencies' events and functions regularly. Bob's industry knowledge is an asset to the agency's board of directors, and his continued presence is of great value. Flori Sanchez's dedication to the agency's, its mission, and the staff are also unwavering. Her private sector experience is an asset to the agency's board of directors, and her continued presence is valuable to both the agency and its staff. I thank you for the opportunity to submit this written testimony in support of Governor Calvo's nominations to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency's Board of Directors. Respectfully, Yvette Marie R. L. G. Cruz, Acting Administrator, Guam EPA. And I also would like to give my support personally to both Mr. Perron and Flori Sanchez. They have been the longest-serving board members of the agency for over 10 years, and they have been an integral part in helping us continue our mission. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your participation this morning, and the acting administrator's testimony will also be entered into the record. Thank you, Jesse. Ms. Sanchez? This is a reconfirmation of the board, and this is your?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that I have enjoyed being on the board for these many years, and I guess the main request I would ask of you is if you could continue to support the EPA Board, the Guam EPA, especially on their hiring needs. They need a lot of the GovGuam to match the federal funds for many of their positions, and they are working quite diligently, and it's rough. They've been having a lot of dual hats, and any support you can provide on that, if they can get more hires, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, duly noted. Thank you, duly noted. Mr. Perron?
Hey, good morning, Chairman Respecho, Senator Torres, Senator Underwood, Senator Ada. Good morning, sirs and ma'ams. My name is Bob Perrin, and I've lived on Guam since 1979. I'm married to the former Donna Rages of Agony Heights, and we have one son, Kyle. I've been serving on the Guam EPA Board for the past 13 years and enjoyed all the challenges and contributing in whatever way I can to our island community. My position as president of Guahan Waste Control and Guahan Waste Recycling puts me in a unique position to lend my experience and expertise to helping protect the environment and to help craft common sense policy. I have extensive training and experience in solid waste management and recycling. I've been certified by SWANA, the Solid Waste Association of North America, in numerous disciplines. I've attached a copy of the certifications to my submittal package. The reason I'd like to continue serving on the board is that with the military buildup coming up, I'd like to continue lending my experience to making sure that things go properly and that our island's environment is protected. We only get one shot at getting it right, and I'd like, like to assist in whatever way I can to make sure we, that we do this. I'd like to thank the governor for having the confidence for the renomination and the legislature for their consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's also recognize your fellow board member, Mr. Zhao, right?
Oh.
Yeah, thank you for being here this morning. Okay, please make sure we have a copy of your written testimony
Okay, sure.
For the committee report. No, basically, we've been through this, we've been down this road many times, and I, I would be remiss if I didn't, for the record, publicly and privately, along with my colleagues here, thank you for your service to the EPA Board. It's certainly a very difficult board to be a part of because of the decisions that you have to make. But, you know, thank you for your service, and the comments you made from the staff are certainly duly noted. And there are at least two and a half dozen EPA staff here that's here in support of your reconfirmation. So that speaks volumes to the kind of leadership that you, that the board has for this agency. Senators, any? Yeah, Senator Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like to thank both nominees for accepting the governor's reappointment, and I look forward to voting on your confirmation. You have my full support and my vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yeah, the questions I have, we could take up at a later time. You've had to sit through a, a bill that was very important, too, regarding elections, and
Right.
And I'm glad that you were here to witness that as well. Even though it's not related to the environment, certainly the leaders that the people put into office has a lot to do with whether or not the environment is protected. So that's also a very important part of that process. So if you have no other comments or statements, or Senator Underwood?
Yeah. I also want to take the opportunity to thank both of you. For Ms. Sanchez, you've been serving on this board for 10 years, right? And then also for 14 years?
Yeah, 13 for both of us. Actually, we came on together, so it's been 13, actually.
That's really, really dedication and passion. And I certainly am very appreciative of that because there, you know, when board changes, it just really does havoc with, can create havoc with operations. But I do have a question, and I'm wondering if either one of you would be able to, to answer relative to the, the update on the asbestos in Legend? Do you have anything that you can share with us at this point?
Yeah, I don't believe that that has progressed. I know the district court asked some questions of the administrator that I would assume he's preparing the answer to, or somebody within the agency is preparing the answers for. So I, I think that's the next step in the process, is for those questions that the court had to be answered and responded to. And, and then it'll go from there, whether it'll be something that moves forward or something that just, it turns out to be something they don't want to do, so.
Okay. And, and just the other question that I have really is that, you know, if you, you must have, as board members, has had priorities for, you know, in terms of policy, right? What are some of those, a couple of those that you would think?
There's always issues that are, that are brought up. And, gosh, there's, one of the things we discuss at the board meetings are the recycling fund, and, gosh, I just, off the top of my head, I'm not quite sure. Sorry to bother you.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, to me, the, the recycling programs are important. And I know we're, we're moving forward. I know it was Senator Respecho's bill that was passed, so that's one thing that's coming into fruition. And then the bottle bill is in, in process, and so there's some responses that are, we're waiting on from Senator Munia Barnes's office. So there's dialogue going on there to see where that's, where that's going and how quick we can get that implemented. But for me, also, the, the military buildup is, is an important thing to keep an eye on. You know, I try to attend all the, the meetings and the public hearings that the, the military has to update the community. So I try to stay on top of that. And I think that's a very important thing to our island going forward, that we, we really manage that properly. And that's one thing I'd really like to focus on over the next few years. And then solid waste is always important to me. It's what I do. So it's, you know, and also how the, the military buildup will affect the solid waste system, too, is another issue. But, but yeah, there's a number of those things that I'm looking forward to tackling with the agency and the board.
And if I may mention, the trash problems that are going on, they're making decisions to close some transfer stations that will affect increased trash dumps. And, and that's a large, large problem here. So if you can continue to work with the EPA Board and their comments, it's really vital.
Thank you so much. I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, and more to Senator Underwood's point. I think at the last hearing with EPA, we made it clear, and the former administrator concurred, and I'm sure the acting administrator will carry on, that any major policy, such as the one Senator Underwood asked regarding the asbestos, placing the asbestos in the landfill, those certainly have to be concurred by the board. Also, the, the decision to say that it's a good idea to reroute storm water into Tumon Bay, you've admitted honestly that that wasn't vetted to the board. But I think after that hearing we had, there was a commitment that those major policies that have to be made certainly have to get board concurrence. And have you seen a change in that since?
Yes, we did bring that up at the board meeting right after that public hearing that we had here for the past renominations of some other individuals. And the board agreed and gave instructions to the administrator that we needed to be involved, and that stuff needed to come through us for us to look at and see if that's something we need to comment on or to, to approve or allow to move forward or not, so.
Okay, and that's very encouraging that that shift in, in, that administrative shift has occurred. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, I've also been very honored to preside over your first confirmation hearing 13 years ago. That's why I said time flies, right? But again, thank you for your continued commitment and for certainly being open and honest about the challenges facing EPA and to be very upfront about it. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
This committee will stand in recess for a couple minutes while we shift gears and set up for the roundtable.